Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council for November 26th. And we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. We have an agenda before us this evening. Are there any alterations?
Speaking now, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we have some Boy Scouts in the audience, so before we start the pledge, do you guys want to come forward and introduce yourselves and tell us what troop you're from? Come on.
Uh-oh.
Mike's coming.
He's coming.
Okay, I was like, where's that?
The mic is the mic. Give me ten seconds.
You'll get the camera set up so you can get things.
I'm Jacob Spencer, and we're from Troop 85.
Good.
Good. Next.
I am Colby Anderson, and I am from Troop 85.
I'm Gabe Lavender, and I'm also from Troop 85.
I'm David McLaughlin from Troop 85.
I'm Riley Caponia from Troop 85.
And are you here working on any badges tonight?
Um, we're working on the citizenship and the community merit badge.
Very good. Well, since you're here, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could all please remain standing for a moment. Heavenly Father, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessing on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you. You may all be seated.
Thanks to Troop 85 for giving us a hand this evening. First item on the agenda is a public hearing, PUD 18-4. Oh, well, we can do that, too.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make approval of the minutes.
All right. We have a...do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the November 5 budget works session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Now, how about a public hearing?
This is an application filed by Yolo Development LLC, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval to rezone approximately 4.6 acres from CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development to a CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development. The property is located on the east side...I'm sorry, the east corner of Harbor Drive and Indian Ripple Road, for the described as Book 3, Page 19, Parcels 95, 97, 98, and 105 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Okay, thank you. If the applicant's present and like to make a presentation, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Hi, Jared Barnett with Synergy, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Beaver Creek, Ohio. Thanks for having us here tonight. Excited to talk to you about this project. We are seeking a rezoning. It is existing PUD. We're seeking to rezone that to allow some self-storage in addition to some of the other uses that were for this site. What we have in front of you is a kind of a test-fit site plan of it. Jeff, if you don't mind, could I have the zoning up there? We've been looking at this piece of property for a while. We've had on and off over, I'd say, five-plus years users for the parcel along Indian Ripple Road there with the frontage. The Harbor Drive, as you go deeper into the site, you know, you can see the original CPUD was 1996, over 20 years ago. That ground sat vacant for a while now. So, we've looked at alternate uses for that. You can see the B4 zoning on each side of it. One of the things allowed in there is self-storage, and that's an amenity that's not in this area. We've looked at other parcels for this that frankly weren't as good of a fit for this piece. So, what we're seeking in front of you tonight's the ability to have that there, the self-storage piece in addition to the building along Indian Ripple. Maybe now I'll go back to that site plan, Jeff. So, I'd say the left side of the plan is probably a little more firm than the right, but we...and we do have a user for about half of that building there that will be right back in behind for pretty much the whole parcel with our specific site plan after the zoning. So, we're anxious to get started on it. You know, we certainly understand some of the potential negative connotations of self-storage, and we even had a couple of folks come out at the first meeting that we were able to get with after the meeting and subsequent conversations, and got them very comfortable with our vision there. And our vision is that this is no different than any other synergy and mills development project we do in Beaver Creek. It'll be of the highest quality. It'll be something that we're looking to own long-term. We understand what the neighbors around there want, and that's anything along Harbor Drive or Indian Ripple will be brick or EFS or similar materials to what we're putting on the retail building along Indian Ripple Road. So, we want to be very clear about our intentions on the aesthetics of that, that we do expect those requirements. I think that'll be part of any approval you do, both on the rezoning and the specific site plan, but that's something we're willing to do, and you typically see in our products. You know, one of the biggest things we liked about this site is it does not buffer residential, and that's a lot of times where you do get people concerned about any potential issues. So, we feel like this is a little island where this product makes sense. It is a very underserved area, and this is an amenity for an area. People in this area are having to go farther for that component than in other parts of Beaver Creek where you see that. So, certainly hopeful that you'll approve it. We're here for any questions you might have. One of the big items I thought was interesting from the couple of folks that were here last time...I don't see them here tonight, so we must have met their needs, but was, you know, "Well, what does this do to my property tax value?" That was probably their number-one concern. Some of the things they liked about it, they liked that it was less traffic. They liked that it was an amenity for even some of their businesses because they had some storage needs, but their concern was property values. And as we pointed out to them, you know, on Pentagon Boulevard, we have several hundred thousand square feet that's surrounded by a self-storage facility there on Pentagon. Similarly, on University Park, we have our University Park campus with 40,000 feet, another 60,000 square feet plan that immediately buffers that. So, we don't view it, especially when it's maintained well and constructed well, as any sort of detriment to property value. We're going to put a couple million dollars in the building in the front that's going to buffer this as well, so obviously, we believe in that product and that it won't impact any real estate values. So, here to answer any questions you might have after Mr. McGrath. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath.
Good evening, council. As Mr. Barnett pointed out in his presentation, this evening, we're here considering a rezoning of about four parcels, a little under five acres, on the quarter of Harbor Drive and Indian Ripple Road. I do want to go back just to have some of the discussions we've had with them over time as they've looked at this market, and this is something they were interested in doing, was other locations that they looked at. We did have some concerns to circle back to what Jared was saying about the joining the residential neighborhoods that are in some of those other parcels that they were looking at along Indian Ripple in this part of town. They did land on this site, which we thought made more sense, especially if there was some kind of buffer up along Indian Ripple Road at that corner, to try to, you know, complete that streetscape on Indian Ripple Road, not do anything that would detract from what we think we could have or continue to have along Indian Ripple Road. So, the office building out front makes sense with the self-storage providing a service that's not really in the south part of town in Beaver Creek currently. But what we're looking at again this evening is a new PUD 18-4. There's conditions of approval that really outline the uses. The uses are very similar to what the uses are permitted in the existing PUD, with the exception of the addition of the self-storage facilities. So, there wouldn't be any conflict in terms of what the anticipations were there previous to where we are this evening, other than, like I said, or Mr. Barnett said, the conversations had with the neighbors over there about adding the self-storage facilities as a permitted use. The access and transportation will be handled at the specific site plan stage with approval of our engineer. Obviously, you can see on this plan, as it stands right now, there's no proposed access on the Indian Ripple Road. Everything would be off of Harbor Drive. I think that's the absolute direction we'll go with this. And the conditions in the ordinance are, this is a concept plan that we would adopt kind of as a reference, as an illustration of the zoning in the text of the staff report. It also has a B2 and O1 zoning uses permitted within this area. We did maintain any conditional use approval. Would have to still come back for planning commissioner approval under an O1 or a B2 zoning district. And we also have pretty specific requirements on the architectural elevations because we knew that would be a concern moving forward, especially for the storage locked facilities, incorporating four-sided architecture, especially around the periphery of the building, anything that's really visible from any neighboring properties. And obviously, the four-sided architecture will be implemented on the office building as well. But there are four conditions in the PUD for your consideration, and this is the first reading. We'll come back for a second and a third reading, but if you have any questions after the public hearing, you'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing tonight, so if there's anyone present that would like to address council on this application, please come forward, give us a name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, or get some time donated by up to two other individuals. So, is there anybody this evening that would like to address us on this issue? No one at all? All right, we will, in that case, the case, we will close the public hearing. Council input. Would we like to start with Councilmember Littrell?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Councilmember Rushing.
No questions.
Councilmember Van.
This is zoning.
They'll have to come back for a site, so I have no questions about the zoning.
Just a comment, really, and I want to thank Mr. Barnett and Synergy for, you know, wanting to continue to invest in Beaver Creek. Appreciate the partnership, and this particular plot of land, I've noticed it over the years, has not done anything, so I'm glad to see there's some interest in it. So, look forward to seeing what you have planned.
Councilmember Kern.
No comments, just glad to see this land developed.
Upton, I think it'll be a real addition to the community. Vice Mayor Garcia.
I think it is.
All right. Well, it seems to be a relatively straightforward application, and again, the site plan will be the...will tell the tale, and so that's where we'll get down to the itty...the minor details, so to speak, and the aesthetics. So, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to move this on to the second and third reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance P...or move PUD 18-4 on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 18-25.
This is the third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 158 by maintaining...by making certain additions, deletions, and changes to various sections of the zoning code.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, would you explain why there's been a few little change...or some alterations to this ordinance?
Yes, sir. I know there were some questions raised at the last meeting about some of the definitions and interpretations, some of the language that was included. You may have seen some omissions moving forward with this draft. It did omit the reference to a tent or temporary shed. That's been omitted. We've also omitted any reference to commercial zoning areas for parking of trucks, and our goal...our intent would be to revisit those in a more specific fashion, to make sure we're not having any ancillary or unanticipated consequences of what the draft language would be, so it's very specific to what we're trying to do. That will come in our next round of zoning code amendments. But again, I think it's critical at this point to move this forward, given that there's some pending issues with medical marijuana regulations, as well as small cell tower regulations that we're seeing a lot of activity on. So, the draft, the crux of this ordinance, and what really drove us bringing forward this amendment is, are those two main items. The rest of it's kind of just some cleanup items and some issues to address some of the concerns we've heard over time from some of the residents. But if there's any question on any of the changes, or any...anybody want any further explanation on anything within the code, I'd be happy to address that.
Anybody have any questions for staff?
So, the chain link fence...
Sure. We have...there is a change in there that does have a prohibition on six-foot chain link fences in the rear yards. We still allow six-foot fences, so they have to be decorative aluminum, wood, privacy. What we've also seen is there's a...when it says split rail, six-foot split rails, not your traditional split rail that you would see, typically not go over 42 inches in height and 48 inches in height, but we've seen some of that, trying to get extended up just to actually wrap chicken wire or some kind of a mesh, metal mesh behind it to keep your dogs in, and we've gotten a lot of complaints, or a lot of complaints from like, I think, the two locations that we've had those presented, and I know Matt's brought that to our attention a couple of times about how that's been the case. So, we've eliminated six-foot fences, chain link and split rail in the rear yards, but there is an exception for tennis courts that allow a 10-foot chain link fence around their...a tennis court, if you were to build one in your backyard.
So, what's the tallest?
What's the tallest fence that can be in a backyard?
Six feet, with the exception of a 10-foot around your tennis court.
Okay, so it can still be six feet tall.
Yes.
It just can't be?
Just can't be chain link.
Chain length, okay.
And you can still have a chain link in your backyard, as long as it doesn't exceed the 42 inches or 48 inches in the code.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kern was the sponsor for this ordinance.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to amend ordinance 18-25 by removing the changes regarding the prohibition of...
Temporary sheds from Section 158, 104, and then amending the verbiage in Section 158, 105, to allow chain link fences over 48 inches if it is surrounding a tennis court, removing language regarding the parking of commercial vehicles and commercial districts from Section 158.118, and then amending the verbiage in the summary on the last page of the ordinance to state it's not an emergency ordinance, and it shall be effective 30 days from passage. Okay, this is a motion to amend the ordinance 18-25. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 18-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Now, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 18-25 as amended? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-25 as amended. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, Resolution 18-46.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a park maintenance agreement with Beaver Creek Township Park District.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Happy to be before you this evening. Staff is before you requesting permission to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Beaver Creek Township Park District. This is for the routine maintenance of their two parks, both Victory Park and Community Park. This is the same agreement that we have entered into this past year for 2018, and we're requesting authorization to enter into that agreement for one more year. Again, this is for general maintenance. If there are additional services needed, those come at additional costs for the park district commissioners and need to be agreed upon with the city. We are asking for your approval at this time.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just a question. So, we're essentially extending the current one-year agreement another year. When does that run out?
It runs out at the end of this calendar year, at the 31st, so...
No, the one that we would be entering into an agreement to now. Would it end with...at the end of 19?
At the end of 19.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I would move to approve Resolution 18-46.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18-46. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Resolution 18-47.
This is a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Playcore Playground Grant.
Good eve...sorry, good evening again, Mayor and council. Before you this evening, we have three playgrounds budgeted for next year, one at Nutter, one at Seville, and one at Stafford Park. And very late this year, staff became aware of a new grant that has just been placed out, and it allows for 100% matching. So, we have budgeted $185,000 for our playgrounds. That includes the playgrounds, the mulch, the landscaping, and the drainage and the curb work, and this grant would actually match that. So, we're requesting permission to apply for that, up to an additional $185,000. It's possible that we receive a portion of it, or some of it, but it's also possible that we don't receive any of it. This is a new grant, and it does come with some monitoring requirements to try and get some additional data, and we believe that we're going to be able to do that with very minimal impact to our staff and be able to take care of that and take full advantage of maximizing those dollars, so...
Thank you very much.
If I could, sorry, if I could highlight our park staff, Kim Farrell, who could not be with us this evening, she and our Assistant Superintendent Zach White were the two that found this new grant opportunity, and my hat's off in appreciation to them for stretching those local dollars and continuing to look for additional resources for our residents.
Thank you. It's always nice if you have the option, or possibility, of doubling your revenue.
Yes, indeed.
Comments? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I know we say this all the time, but we do have a phenomenal staff, and I appreciate you looking into any and all avenues possible for funding. We are on a fixed income, but it's great to see that you guys are finding new grants and new ways to better our community, so thank you for finding this.
I'll pass it along to the comments, the staff.
Yeah, please do.
Anyone else?
Second that.
Yes, I think we all second that one. Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further comment, I would move for approval of Resolution 18-47, Playground Grant Application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18-47. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, liquor permits. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I have a request for a new liquor permit for Luminous Nail Spa, Inc. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control notified us of a new D3 liquor permit for Luminous Nail Spa, Inc., doing business as Luminous Nail Spa, at 2451 Lakeview Drive, Suite 108. The records checked required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the business officers and shareholders, and staff is recommending this application request move forward with no comment.
Do I have a motion?
No comment. Mr. Mayor.
We'll get there, council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor permit for Luminous Nail Spa without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We're moving right along. Mayor's report. I don't have a whole lot tonight, but I wanted to talk about the Cub Scouts that we're in last week, and I wanted to thank the Vice Mayor for joining me and for Councilmember Kern for joining me. We had a wonderful time, and the Scouts, I think, had a great time up here passing. They passed...made a couple laws, in essence, and seemed to enjoy themselves. The parents seemed to enjoy it just as much, so I wanted to point that out. Other than that, I'm going...we're going to move right on to council time. Would we like to start on my right to Councilmember Littrell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank everyone that came out for Small Business Saturday. I frequented some of our local establishments, and there was quite a few people out, and so I'm glad to see that because small business is the backbone of our economy and our entrepreneurs. I can never say that word right, but they just did a great job, and I love all of the places along Dayton-Zenia and some of the ones on North Fairfield, so thanks to everyone that came out for that. And I hope everyone had a blessed holiday, and I really thank the Scouts for coming tonight. It's always great to see our young people looking at the council and seeing how government works. I think it's an excellent opportunity, so thank you for your patience and for helping us with the pledge.
Right, Mr. Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only a couple items this evening. I just want to thank Premier Health. Two weeks ago, they broke ground with their new doctor offices building, which would be behind the Chick-fil-A. I know Mayor Stone, City Manager Landrum, and Councilmember Kern, as well as myself, were there for their groundbreaking. Only everything else I want to mention this evening is, I want to thank the AP Government Teachers at the high school for inviting Councilmember Kern and I out to speak with the government teachers for the day. We spent several hours out there speaking to all the AP Government classes about local government and how it affects their daily life. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
We're just fresh off the holiday. We're fresh off the holiday, and I just am still on a roll from being thankful for all the wonderful things, blessings that we have with family and the community, and we just really have a nice place to live, so it's been...we have much to be thankful for. That's it.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
But in the spirit of being thankful, I guess I am extremely grateful that my alma mater put a shulakking on that team up north on Saturday. I was not...I'm sorry, Diane. I was not expecting...it was very wonderful. So, go Bucks! And also, too, we had a great time with the Boy Scouts. I see a few in the audience. So, is this similar to what you did when you were up here? Do you feel like this...yeah? Oh, good, so we did our job. All right, good to know. So, thanks again for coming out and having all the Boy Scouts, and I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Upton.
No comments for me tonight.
Councilmember Kern.
Just a ditto of the Vice Mayor. Glad to have the Scouts out. The other night, it was really fascinating watching you guys deal with the dynamics of local issues. Super.
Okay, and I'm going to jump back in just briefly. I thanked the Scouts, but I also wanted to talk about a group of homeschool kids that came in here as well, and they had a blast as well. When we get a group of young people, we try to...at least, if I have anything to do with it, I try to get them up here and go through the motions and make real discussions and real comments on what's going on, so they...I hope they enjoyed themselves as well. I think they did. They actually sent me that...well, we sampled it at one of the work sessions, a little thank you, and so I do want to thank the young ladies that sent the goodies, goodybasket. All right, now, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
All right, thank you, and I was at the Bucks game, so go Bucks! That was a great game. I have my Ohio State tie on, if anybody can see, being a little carnal on being sport-minded, but yeah, and many, I'm thankful as well. We are very blessed to live in the community we do serve in as well. Just a couple of quick announcements. Darce Road will be closed, weather permitting, starting November 27th, that's tomorrow. Last I looked, it was snowing outside, so we'll see how that goes. Darce Road will be closed of traffic just to the south of Indian Ripple Road for sanitary sewer work. Closure expected to last two days, and a detour will be posted during this time, and emergency access will not be possible while this work is in progress, so that's a key point there. But as weather permitting, so we'll see if it's delayed any. We'll update everybody on Facebook and our web pages as this information is always put on there. As well, Citizen Satisfactory Survey is out. We had to wait for the Parkmaster Plan to be completed. We had to wait for the Parkmaster Plan to be completed. They had a survey out as well, and we didn't want to overlap the surveys, so the city survey is out there. It's on our website, it's on Facebook, it's on Twitter, the links to it is a survey monkey that you can go out and take a quick survey about the, regarding the city services, so please look out there on our Facebook, Twitter, and our Beaver Creek homepage for the link to the survey monkey. And it's going to be available through December 15th. Just a couple of the upcoming events. The holidays, you know, there's a lot of programming going on, but the golf course is one of those big hits that they have, is they're having the Holiday Brunch with Santa on December 9th. It's open to the public. You have to schedule, so please call the Beaver Creek Golf Club, reserve your time. Most of the time, they are sold out of this Holiday Brunch, and Santa will be there, but Sunday 10:00 a.m., I believe they have different times for the brunch, but Santa will be there Sunday 10:00 a.m. December 15th, Breakfast with Santa, sponsored, he's making his rounds, sponsored by Soane Medical Center, Saturday 9:00 a.m., December 15th, 9:00 a.m. at the Mall of Fairfield Commons. And December 15th, also Yuletide Yoga, free community yoga class, it's going to be Saturday at 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., and that's at Little Fino Plaza. So there's, there's a lot of, keep, again, on our website, and always, of course, our in-touch publication and all our social media. We try to have all these activities out there for you. Speaking of a fun activity, and speaking of the snow flying, do you want to build a snowman contest? Last year, we had a great winner, so grab your camera and get ready for Beaver Creek Parks and Recreation Contest, and this is, take a photo of your snowman and email it to theparks@beavercreecoheil.gov between December 3rd and February 11th. I would be okay if you can't build a snowman till maybe much later than that.
End of February.
End of February, maybe. One day, build a snowman. Everybody has to get it in. But photos will be posted to the city page, February 15th through 22nd, for voting, and basically how it works is, the family with the most likes will win the Family Fun Pack prize. For more questions, contact Parks and Rec at 427-5514. But that was a lot of fun time, a lot of good pictures. Again, that's a fun way to put our social media to work. And lastly, it's kind of hard to believe 2018 is passing us by. Our last city council meeting will be Monday, December 10th. That's our last one at 6:00 p.m. That will, city council will also be passing the budget for the year, and I will be, as tradition and as actually required to our charter, be presenting the state of the city at our last meeting. So that'll be December 10th at 6:00 p.m., so please join us if you're interested in hearing the state of the city. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. All right, at this point, it's time for anyone to address council on any issue. If you have an issue you'd like to address with council, please come forward, give us a name, an address, and limit your comments to three minutes unless you have time donated by up to two other people.
Harold Lewis, 1423 Town Hall.
Yes, sir.
I was the one, as you all know, brought up a lot of the questions on the zoning court ordinance. There's a lot of issues with the zoning code. This fence thing, all of a sudden popped up. The, you can't have a, more than, you can have a, you can have a chain-link fence for a tennis court. When we discuss that in our coffee group, and we do a lot of talking in our coffee group every morning, come join us, you'll see. A lot of issues came up. Why are we paying special attention to a tennis court? The fence for a tennis court is mentioned three places in that zoning code. Now, well, this would be the third place, so you can't go and look up tennis court and see what the fence requirement is. The same thing for a swimming pool. You can have a six-foot fence for a swimming pool, but now all of a sudden, it can't be chain-linked, but you can't get that when you go to the sectional swimming pool. Why not? Put it in there. I was hoping that somebody would say, let's put that in the swimming pool section, that it can't be a chain-link fence, but nobody did it. So now you got to go, and it doesn't even tell you to go to this section. So as a user of the zoning code, we citizens get confused. There's too many places to go to try to figure out what to do. So if you want to see zoning code violations, please understand why. The zoning code is not clear. You keep adding to it, but you don't clean it up. Clean it up. Get a group together and clean the zoning code up. Make it easier to use. Please. Like one guy said, the forty-eight inch, my dog can jump it. Now I can't have a chain-link fence. He's got to put up a wood slap fence, which he doesn't want. So it makes no sense. Please clean up the zoning code. I mean, I've been told that the reason they can't clean up junkyards and backyards is the zoning code says, unless we see it from the street, we can't enforce it. That's nonsense. Absolute, there's nothing in the zoning code that says that. Show me that in the zoning code, but that's what we're being told. So clean up the zoning code. Don't keep adding. We got more junk in it right now we can handle. You can't enforce what we got. Please clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Nothing from the Scouts? All right, we're going to move on. Next item is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Or ma'am, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. I have a question. When I was reviewing that in response to that comment on the fences, it's my understanding that, you know, there's dozens and dozens of homes, thousands probably, in Beaver Creek that have chain-link fences. They don't have to be replaced. You don't have to change your fence.
Correct.
So I just wanted to be clear, well, you said your friend was going to have to put a wood slap fence.
Because he's got to replace his chain-link fence, it's not taller. He was going to put a five-foot fence, now he can't do it.